I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order. Please note attendance to any, thanks. Um, move right into discussion items. Summer Board Work Session and Training. Um, dated topics for consideration. This is something we normally do every summer. Sometimes we do some training from OSBA and our packet was a list of top possible topics we could have if we want to do a training. So Andy, do you want to throw anything out or should we just discuss it? We want to, what we want to do?
I think I'd look like to rely upon the seven of you that say how valuable it's been, especially those who've been more members more than one year about how valuable it's been to have someone come in and do some training. From my perspective, I think it's been very helpful for superintendent board relationships uh, over the years. But I'll, you know, would encourage you to give some serious consideration. I did throw in the ethics training as a, as a possible consideration. And actually after I sent that out, I realized it, I don't know that that was Renee Sessler as much as it was, it was an attorney from OSBA that he'd worked with through a matter uh, who suggested ethics training be given consideration by the board. Uh, but there are multiple trainings there. I've heard good things about all of them.
Do you know how long the ethics one is?
I don't know for certain Kim, but it seems to me two to four hours is kind of the standard for these.
Cause normally would you like to have extended work session in the summer of like a two evenings or something like that? Which has seemed to work pretty good rather than trying to push it all into one day. So what are you guys' thoughts?
You know, school financing and budgeting might be a timely subject. With the pending first issue, at least for me, that's one of my interests. Rules and responsibilities are always good as a refresher. I think that would.
Yeah, I, I don't, I kind of like what Ron said. Finance is probably one of my least favorite subjects and one I'm not good at. Um, so I always might go learn more about what I'm not good at.
But school finance is different too. It might be a good one.
Yeah.
When do we need to know, when do we need to kind of have a decision?
I think this would be better. They get booked up over the summer pretty quickly.
And would we try to put it up each then? In a couple of meetings is how we do it.
Not what we did last summer?
Yeah, I'd prefer to do it in a couple of evenings or something if we could. Like from six to eight or five to eight or whatever.
I'd prefer later in the summer.
Yeah, with two. In August.
Yeah. After Blueberry Harbor.
Yes.
They're not going to be worth it in the city.
Maybe. All you know is real early.
So thoughts? School fin- I wonder how the financing and budgeting would that be? I mean, could we throw a couple of topics in or do we have two minutes? Cause we probably don't have a huge agenda.
I, I would have to find out some more information, but you're right. Your June and July work sessions are normally fairly light. You've even canceled one or well, they haven't canceled both, but you've canceled one of those meetings in the past or last few years, uh, simply because it's still light in the summertime.
Do we want to throw both those topics out? The ethics and the finance and some of the ones that kind of thrown out there or see how are they?
Maybe find out how, how long it take if it's possible to do like one per meeting or something like that.
Okay.
And what are the dates?
Yeah, your regular work session is scheduled for June 27th and July 25th. And you folks may know what your calendars look like many times that the reason we cancel a meeting is because we don't get a quorum in some cases because you're on vacation or doing things so we go home.
Does anybody know for August? Our normal work session would be August 22nd.
Sounds great. I don't think I've, I don't think I've, I've got some conflicts in June, July, but I don't have in August.
I bet it can't be true.
I've got a couple of meetings.
You're gone the 22nd though?
Yeah.
How about the weekend, how about the week before?
Fifteenth?
Sixteen? Fifteen, I'm clear. Week before I'm good. Fifteen, the fifteenth I'm good.
Should we just change our work session then?
Or the 29th?
29th is probably getting a little late for you guys. We're getting into in-service time.
Oh yeah, people here, yeah.
Yeah, it's in-service date.
Well, how about we tentatively look at the 15th, 16th, something like, or something, or something that week. It doesn't even have to be Monday and Tuesday.
Well, I leave toward the end of the week. Fifteen and the 16th are our days to work for me.
Tentative that maybe check your schedules when you get home and um, Andy maybe confirm by email.
I'll ask them for the 15th or 16th and see if they're available to do one or both of those of how long they'll be. So I hear you say stay away from June, July.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
Yeah. Okay.
You, and, and just because I know it'll come up as a topic at some point, you do have one tentative topic for your June work session, uh, just an update, end of the year update on standards based grading, but we have nothing slated for July at this point yet.
Okay.
Just food for thought.
Okay. Okay, moving on, staff and community engagement about schools. Can you give us an update?
Yeah, I'm actually going to go to the computer for the first portion of this with the Telorgan results. Not certain if any of you had a chance to take a look at this website. If you haven't, I encourage you to. It's at just telorg.org. And it actually shows the results for the Telorgan survey for all school districts in the state of Oregon. When, when you talk about data, this is, this is voluminous. I mean, especially if you consider all schools statewide and just some brief history, the Telorgan survey was designed, intended I should say with, through cooperation of, um, by OEA and OSBA, COSA, Oregon PTA and some other groups, uh, because there was plenty of conversation, has been over the past number of years, 10, 15, even 20 years about everything related to schools, right? And you hear it every legislative session, whether it be facilities or curriculum or class sizes. And of course you go through some economic slumps and all of a sudden you have lots of more, lots more items, lots more conversation pieces. And so the legislature two sessions ago believed it would be entirely appropriate to put some funding into a statewide survey, a statewide tool to collect information directly, so to speak, from the trenches. And so this is information from teachers and administrators, predominantly teachers though, with questions about a variety of, of areas. And uh, it would take a long time to go through all of these results. So I would like to identify just a few areas that I think are, are worth mentioning to you uh, as a school district, even though this is the second survey that's been completed. Sorry, I'm just, oops, now I'm going too slow. The second survey that's been completed, uh, the first survey was a fairly low turnout in Silver Falls, uh, about 25 or 28% I believe. So when you, if you click on Silver Falls, you'll, you'll get all of the, all of the schools and you can click on any of those schools. The, uh, there are three report forms. The one I've been using predominantly is the one on the left. Uh, and you can see in this case we had 61% of our, our teachers and administrators participate in the survey. Uh, and again, a, a lot of information. Uh, but when, when I went through it, uh, I just, I think it's really important that anytime you take a look at survey data like this, that you do everything you can to try to identify the trend, trends and, and patterns of information. And it's even more important, and I put this in the memo to you, that you take the, the trend and pattern information that you see from a document like this and you combine it with another document like the thought exchange, public engagement that we have going on, or the city of Silverton has a survey that has just been completed. Those results haven't been, uh, made available yet, but we anticipate that will happen in June or by midsummer anyway. So, so I think that's really where the credibility comes from a, a document like this is that you look for those things that are highlights. Now the other piece and would be easy to do with this document is you can go through and you can find a number of things that you personally would say is a priority for you as a school district. But I think what's more important, especially for you as a board, is you take a look at this, is identify what the board believes are priorities. But just as importantly, I think it's, uh, the schools, cause this is valuable data for the schools, need to recognize what are some of the priorities for the school. Now a school itself may identify three, four, five, even 10 priorities based upon some of this information. The reality is you can't focus on 10 things. I mean, unless there's some pattern or some, some similarities between them. So what the Tel folks and actually, uh, other state educators are recommending is that schools specifically identify two or three areas to focus on and also two or three areas that you can feel very good about. There's a lot of very good information in this. And so let me just identify a few things and then if, if you want to have conversation about it, of course, uh, I think you should, you should do that. And then as we begin to, or end this year and begin next year, begin talking about goal setting, even modifications to your strategic plan. Uh, I think this is a very important tool that we need to keep in mind as we do this.
Anyone says we're a department of education, is that the composite of the state?
Statewide, yeah. And, and take a look at the top, 54% of teachers across the state responded, 61% of the school district responded. So, um, uh, again, if I, I apologize if I go through some of this fairly quickly, but there are some areas that I, I just wanted to highlight. So question, question two dot one, uh, related to class sizes. I thought this one was rather interesting. Class sizes are reasonable such that teachers have the time available to meet the needs of all students. And I zeroed in very quickly. Well, first of all, I'm looking for similarities between the district and, and the state and I'm looking for differences. But if you take a look at this, first of all is that, you know, with Silver Falls, they uh, 40, 44, 46% of Silver Falls staff believe that class sizes are reasonable, that teachers have time available to meet the needs of students. And you combine the top two numbers for the state of Oregon and you only have 37%. So that's an indicator, uh, that numerous teachers in this school district feel like class sizes are adequate. Now clearly there's a large volume of teachers who disagree. There's also a large volume of these teachers who disagree across the state about class sizes. And so I think from again, a district standpoint, you have to take that into consideration because what effect do you have on that? And then the other piece that I'll share with you, cause there's lots of data points out there. If you take a look at our statewide report card, Silver Falls School District actually has one of the lowest class sizes around, uh, at the elementary level especially. Uh, and very pleased with that each year, but still we have a number of teachers who believe that its, um, class sizes are too large. Um, and then I'll scroll down to, uh, to, again, there are pages and pages here. So if you ask me to stop, I'm glad to. Uh, this one was interesting. Teachers have sufficient, letter F, sufficient instructional time to meet the needs of all students. Again, 55% of Silver Falls teachers felt that was yes, or 46% of the state stated that it was no. So not a huge difference, but a difference since I think worth noting, uh, when you talk about what we can provide in our school district. Um, I'm going to move right down to question two. In an average week, how much do you vote to the following activities during the school day? Um, I'm going to zero right in on B. This one caught my attention. Again, this is, this is less than or equal to one hour of time for collaborative time. We have, um, you know, 61% of our teachers who say that they have, you know, less than or equal to an hour worth of time. You can take a look at that a couple of ways. Uh, in that, I think from my perspective, the first thing that came to my mind is that if I find the 61% with the 15% you have more than an hour, that, you know, 61, 71, you get 76% of our teachers who are collaborating in some capacity during the week and the most of them doing that in an hour or less time. It could also be an indication that teachers want more time to collaborate. So there are some additional questions later on in the survey that help you zero in a little bit more on that. But if I take a look at the state average, only 48% of the teachers, uh, and you combine that with a 34 with two or more, it's just an interesting dynamic that there are teachers across the state who clearly get more than an hour of time in any given week to collaborate.
Could that be true to the configuration of our schools?
And that's exactly where we're going with this. Your, your unique district doesn't lend itself to teacher collaboration in a way that a Salem Kaiser or Cascade or North Mary and her other schools do when they're so close with each other and they have similar grade configurations and similar structures. So again, taking some of these things with a grain of salt, but they're also very valuable. Question three, sorry, I'm moving through this. Uh, in an average week of teaching, how many hours do you spend on school related activities outside of the regular school workday before or after school and/or on the, on the weekend? Question three point one. Oh, I'm sorry, that wasn't it. It's still question two. Uh, please rate how strongly you agree or disagree about the, your facilities and resources. Uh, three point one, B, teachers have sufficient access to instructional technology. Uh, very proud of this, this one. If you take a look at Silver Falls, we have 79% of our teachers who believe they have sufficient access to technology, computers, printer software, internet access, 79 as compared to 68 statewide. And when, when I, when you know, many of you know, I know distinctly how we've stretched the dollar in this district over the last, especially six or seven years to get wireless access point to each one of our schools and to be very, very careful about how we spend our dollars. Uh, your teachers are recognizing that it's, it's effective and it's working, uh, at least from my perspective, they do. Moving right on down to letter G. Teachers have adequate space to work productively. Again, people, I think the teachers in this district generally feel like they have adequate space in order to, um, and to do that. Question number four. Uh, I highlight this one because this is one of your specific targets, especially related to your goals for this year and your strategic plan, um, related to community support and involvement. And I'm going to go right to B. Uh, the school maintains, again, there's your questions by school. The school maintains clear two-way communication with the community. Um, you have 88% of your teachers feeling very good about that. And 84% again is a statewide standard to compare that to. Letter F, parents, guardians, support teachers, contribute each other's success with students, which generally tells me that there's good relationship going on and including good communication. You have 88% of Silver Falls teachers feeling good about that as compared to 72% of statewide Again, just as you scroll through this, I encourage you to take a look at where those wider green and, and blue spans are. Managing student conduct, I think was rather interesting, not from an individual question standpoint, but nearly every single one of these questions.
Wow.
The Silver Falls School District teachers felt very good about managing student conduct, expectations for students, how well their students behave. Uh, and again, uh, directly from your teachers who feel good about how student behavior is not only addressed in this district, but how students, how students themselves behave. Uh, teacher leadership is one that caught my attention and in a, in a way that I'd like to think could be better. In fact, I know it could be better because we, we performed below the state average in a few of these questions. And I, uh, actually, no, I'm sorry, that's not it just yet. School leadership specific and just a moment, but teacher leadership, uh, question number or let it be. Teachers are trusted to make sound professional decisions about instruction. This one caught my attention because it, um, it gives an indication that teachers would like, uh, either more, uh, decision-making authority about instruction, or maybe they're not being fully, uh, challenged or satisfied with the amount of opportunity they're provided to make some decisions about instruction. And I think that's, uh, that's one that, that we need to zero in and focus on to be certain that our student, or excuse me, our teachers are feeling like they are just not only committed to the task, but also feel like they can contribute to the task in a reliable way. Need to drill that one down and that one a little bit more and find out what that's all about. I did want to compare it to, um, six point two. Question two, six point two. Uh, because then when you take a look at this answer, again, indicate the role the teachers have at your school in each of the following areas. When, so when you compare to professional decisions about instruction and then look at this one devising teaching techniques, here your teachers are saying you give us plenty of opportunity to devise, uh, teaching techniques. And so there's a little contradiction going on that, that that one I think just takes a little bit more sorting, uh, in order to figure out what's happening there. Uh, question seven is the one that caught my attention most notably and, uh, and that has to do with school leadership. Again, this is district wide. I think it's fair to say that if you were to take a look at, uh, individual school results, you'll see that, uh, school leadership is actually, we performed fairly well in a number of our schools, but two of our largest schools, especially the high school in Mark Twain, uh, had some, uh, specific reflection related to, uh, school leadership. Now I'm going to throw a couple of things out there because it's very easy to, and of course we have to be cautious, very easy to go to a, a personnel matter or something that's specific to, uh, one or more leaders within the school. However, when I think in terms of what's happening at Mark Twain, you've got a huge transition about to happen, uh, in that building. You throw that in the mix and you've got some anxiety, uh, and some uncertainty. And so that, that truly makes some sense. I don't want to minimize anything here, but I just think it's important that you try to recognize that there are probably other variables at play here.
Can I throw some counterbalance to that too?
Sure, look for it.
I think you take a similar school like, and I looked through some of these results as well. Take a similar school like Eugene Field now to Mark Twain.
Right.
Elementary, another similar school in transition and they had different results.
Right.
And a little bit different evaluation, especially in, in that area that you're speaking of. So I think, yes, I think transition has something to do with it, but again, we have another large school that's under transition that doesn't have quite the same.
Exactly.
Same, I would say, let's be honest, negative ratings potentially that this, that this did in Mark Twain, so.
So if you take a, a look at these, everything from, uh, you know, a lot of them are very close to the, to the state average, but, uh, you know, uh, letter A, the faculty and leadership have a shared vision. There's clearly some differences there as compared to what's experiencing across the state. Teachers are comfortable raising issues and concerns that are important to them. Uh, there's some, I think it statistically, if you were to take a look at, it's close, but there clearly is some uncertainty or lack of comfort in a couple of areas specific to.
Sandy on the trust and mutual respect up there on the B. Did you drill down those schools as well and was this?
I have, I have not looked at all of these questions with, in that kind of detail ball. But I think what's, what, from my perspective, what, what's important to do now is in fact, we've, I've taken the full leadership team, uh, all through, uh, these results. I've asked them to not only take a look at each one of the results from, from their school, but to share the results specifically in a staff meeting, uh, with, with the staff members and work with their staff members, even coming together with our larger schools especially, identifying what those top two or three concerns are, uh, in, in the school that, that they, they believe, uh, and that they can agree on our ways to best address that. I think half the time, and the validity of, of a tool like this is number one, not only giving teachers an opportunity to share valuable information, but I think it's just as important that administration, school board members as well, recognize when there are areas that need to be addressed. Uh, cause if you don't share it and if you don't give your staff an opportunity to have the conversation, then I think you're missing the mark big time. Uh, and so we've had the conversation at the administrative level. It will continue into our administrative, um, in-service planning for this summer. And I see information like this being a, a huge emphasis in how we even prepare for the beginning of next year within service. We need to recognize when there are areas that, that we need to focus on. Uh, I don't think there's anything here that would cause me to say that we have a huge red flag or a huge problem specifically across the district, but there are clearly indicators, again, when combined with other pieces of, of information that we have. Principals know their buildings the best. They know the culture of their building the best. You combine this information with that and then you, I think you have some solid pieces that you can work on.
Yeah, this is great data.
I agree.
Make sure everybody knows that we appreciate them doing that. How, how long does it take, did it take the staff members to do these?
Well, everything's electronic.
Yeah.
But.
There's a lot clicking going on.
I believe it started in, I believe it started in late March or early April. And the window was open for maybe three weeks. Uh, we sent out two or three reminders to all teachers to participate, you know, do all of that.
They sat down and did it.
Well, they did it.
Half an hour.
Half an hour.
Thirty, forty minutes.
It's a long time.
It's a pretty good.
It's, 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 it's good though, thank you. It's very good information, you know?
No, it's good, it's good to hear that Andy, that you already said it, you know, they're having staff meetings.
Yeah.
And again, this is to Tom's point, this is really important. This is our staff, you know? And if there's a red flag, then, then we have to say, okay, we all need to get, get together and figure this out.
That's right.
You know, and to say, you know, appreciate the input. And I would hope each, you know, site coordinator or site leader, whether it be positive off the charts or not so positive off the charts ratings, they would take this and, and really say, you know, we appreciate this honest feedback and that something is really being done with this because, you know, hey, we've got some red flags, we can, we can get better. So it's encouraging to hear that. We're not just kind of like, oh, this is good and not really giving it a lot of attention. I think it's important that we continue to. I would call it red flags. I should say, I should say there's some areas here I think we can improve on and work on. Yeah, I mean, like some red flags, but just areas of improvement.
Yeah, the value of something like this too, I, I agree. It take, it take, using information now, it becomes even more valuable two years from now when the assessment is taken, our survey is taken again, and we have some of the same trend data. We really can't compare it to two years ago because we didn't have a high enough participation even to get results for most schools in our district. So it didn't really serve a purpose. And when you have a 25% participation one year versus 61% participation the next, I think it's hard to statistically compare some of those.
Well, and you've got some leadership changes.
Right.
At some facilities as well that might be drastically, like the high school.
Correct.
You've got a leadership change there that you expect that, that the results would be different in two years.
Sure, absolutely.
So what would be the possibility of making it just for our district, maybe doing this again next year, just for our teachers? That way we have some data to put out for, you know, maybe in two years when they do this again, we'll have three years worth of good data.
Well, this is a statewide survey that we don't, we don't have. So we have to create the survey and.
What if we just filled out some, you know, sheets and passed them around to the teachers? That, that kind of thing? Would it be, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I think, I think it's fair. I, you know, I don't know that we could do the full-blown survey Todd, because we're talking about endless questions here that have been statistically referenced and norm referenced and all of that. But I think those areas, especially that we see some concerns, uh, I, I think so. Yeah.
Maybe we should.
Sure.
And they could pull out the areas they're working on and do a survey on those, those items.
Call it the key items. Well, you know, like the high school if there was, you know, issues. That, that way you can see if next year, hey, we've had staff changes, things changed or we're in, you know, some of their schools.
Good. You can take this, just those maybe four or five key, you know, or three or whatever it was and, and just do a, your in-house survey to see if that follow-up for the next year is, is changing or. The school probably have a different set of questions for serving.
Yeah. Let me see, I, just a couple more here and then I'll be finished, but question number eight. Uh, twelve, question number seven. There were some in there as well, or in school, other school leadership questions that we would focus on. A lot of these are very consistent to state average. Uh, then question. How strongly do you hear your disagreement about professional development in your school? Uh, I thought this was interesting, let it be. An appropriate amount of time is provided for professional development. Then this one caught my attention a little bit, uh, simply because I think, uh, it's less than, than the state average, about 45% folks said no, it's not, uh, where 31% of, uh, state, uh, is saying no. And so, uh, you know, the first thing that came to mind for me was, you know, people, teachers may not feel satisfied that, that with some of the professional development that's occurring in the district. I think you have to say, you know, we've got 47, you know, 55% saying yes, they, they appreciate it, uh, but it sounds to me like maybe we're missing the mark on some staff when it comes to professional development in this district, whatever that means. I haven't had a chance to speak with Wendy Wires about this specific question yet with Andy, uh, but this needs to be a topic that, that we need to address as well, whether it's something specific to how we use professional time, uh, how we use, uh, PLC time. Uh, all of those should be given serious consideration to this. Or whether people are fully satisfied with, cause we've put a huge amount of time into the, the state collaboration grant resources, uh, related to this. And there's quite a bit of money available there for just this, professional development of all of our teachers. Uh, and sometimes it's just a matter of opportunity. Uh, it could, this could also be a reflection of the fact that people don't like being out of their classrooms so much. Uh, and our veteran teachers especially are, are teachers who are so closely passionate about their profession, they don't like being out of their classroom. That could also be reflected in this too. So it just creates some interesting conversation, which I believe is part of the Tel survey as well. They want to create some conversations in your schools and district, too.
That data almost like attracts with the lack of, the concern about having collaboration with their peers.
Sure.
Just the fact that they can't, you know.
And where is that coming from? Is this powered by our in-town schools? Is this, are the, is it, when you separate those two kind of cohorts, how is the outer tech, are the outlying schools that are powering this in a kind of not as favorable light? Is it at the high school versus the lower grades? I think it might be nice.
Well, we also don't know what the message is.
Right.
I've taken certain surveys like this before. What goes through my mind, goes to me usually with this data, be careful what you ask for. This may be used for something you had no intention to happen.
Right. Remember, this is a snapshot in time of one specific question at that moment on that day for those people. So, you know, statistics, you're right, you have to be very careful about how you use them.
It'd be interesting to, on the, like, the professional development one, since we are below the state average, it'd be interesting to see how much other, how much time other districts have, like, compared for our PLC time and things like that. Because I've heard, you know, I've heard people say that they would like to see more than more of that, but then there's teachers who think it's too much now.
It says appropriate, so it could be either way.
Yeah.
It's appropriate, yes.
So, I don't know, it'd be interesting to compare maybe what other districts, you know, I know some who have early releases every week.
Right. Yeah. Question eight, two.
Who wears times?
There's a ton of information here. In which areas do you need professional development to teach your students more effectively? I highlighted this one because I believe that if you take a look at question D, so we're in very quickly on this one, is that we have 50% of our staff, they have adequately prepared in differentiated instruction in Silver Falls School District. Again, that'd be nice if that was a higher figure, but when you think in terms of them feeling confident, and when you think in terms of the needs of ELL students and special ed students and talented and gifted students, we're performing higher than the state in this area, which from a superintendent standpoint makes me feel pretty good and confident that we're moving in the right direction, because even if you take a look at our mission statement and our core values for the district, it's all about teaching to the individual student, and that's what differentiated instruction is all about. And finally, I'm just gonna fly through some of this, but if you head right down to question, there's some PD timing here, a lot of very close to average or above average state average here, but if you scroll right down to question 11, just wanted to get more instructional practices information.
Well, that's long.
Yeah, it's long, there is. If you're a statistic geek, this is really great stuff, and you can spend hours and hours in love on this. But if you take a look at the new teacher support, again, feeling very, very good about this, we've, for the last few years, qualified for state mentoring grants for our new teachers. Our new teacher responses are off the charts for the support that they get in this district, and research shows that as long as your new teachers get support, they'll stay in there predominantly for their profession, for their career. And so, taking a look at each one of these Silver Falls is just a shining star in many ways. So, anyway, I really am sorry that we couldn't spend much more time on that, and I'm sure they can if you like, but I think if you have some time at home and an hour to spare, and really want to drill down on a few of these, and see anything that draws your attention, shoot me an email, and we can truly dig into them more, but be assured that we, as a staff in each one of your schools, are digging into their school-specific information and looking for trends and patterns to make it right.
Good.
Great. Thank you.
Just before you got to the last question, is there any, maybe that corresponds with the length of tenure of the teachers? Because a lot of those questions were kind of subjective, with something, maybe the number of teachers that have 15 or 20 years versus the number of three to five to seven year experienced teachers.
Yeah, I looked through all the questions myself, and I don't recall any question to differentiate between length of time other than the mentoring questions.
Okay.
Because it's with teachers within, I believe, five years of experience that responded to this. I'll take a look, but I don't, I don't remember.
I just don't know if that gave different points of view of some of the things like, you know, the PLC time and what.
Right, so, okay, we'll take a look. Anything else? I'm gonna get back to you. Hopefully, you folks were able to participate in the thought exchange engagement yourself, and we don't have the results yet. We've seen some preliminary information just because they call us a couple of times and source some information out to be certain that they are accurate in how they reported. But we had 300 people participate, and this is open for, I think, two weeks, two and a half weeks. 300 people participated in the initial thought gathering phase of this with 1,371 thoughts that were submitted, so individual phrases, individual thoughts, and then, again, thought exchange, so they nice job of looking for some of that similarity. And then the second phase of that is, if you refer to as the star step, where it's more of a prioritization. So, they take all the similar information they found in the first phase, and they ask people to place stars based upon what their priorities are, and I see some head nods, so I know some of you folks participated. But 688 people in our school district, or at least they participated, assuming they're in our school district, or at least of interest, with an additional 1,371 thoughts. And so, chances are, the 688 people included the 300 people, but clearly, an additional 400, nearly 400 people participated even in the second phase of this. So, you've had at least 700, probably more, like eight or 900 people participating in this and giving us some good feedbacks. So, I'm very curious to see the feedback, which I anticipate will be, again, mid to late June. We'll be able to get that to you in July and share that in a similar fashion as we did with this.
It was an interesting survey. I've never seen one like that before, you know, kind of all the different thoughts put on one spot, you know, per kind of subtitle or similarity, take your stars and move them around, and it's just, it was kind of unique. It was different.
Yeah, it is unique. It's not a statistical norm reference, a survey that something like this would be considered, but the beauty of this is that it allows every single thought that can be converged into one, and to be able to extract what some of the similarities are. People who do this thought exchange sit for hours and hours, reading all of our responses, and they're very professional about what they do, putting those similar thoughts together and trying to come up with some data points so that it can be as accurate as we want it to be.
What a job.
That's huge.
Yeah. Reading all the responses.
And then I already mentioned the, oh, I'm sorry, no, I, number three, we don't have that number three on there. The City of Silverton survey, I know has been taken, given, and there were, I think, about, I don't know, a dozen or so questions that were specific to the school district. Again, those are specific to the City of Silverton, but we'll be getting those results here soon as well. Okay, middle school construction update. Yeah, I'm doing more talking than whatever, but I give you each, an update as of today with the project. Lauren is here to answer any specific questions, specific questions, or questions that may be related to the site itself. I think it's fair to say that a couple of things that are of importance to note is that, you know, the project is moving ahead. It's not specifically to the timeline that we have hoped for, simply because there are a couple of change orders that have cost a little extra time, but we're not to a point of concern about being ready for the school year. I mean, progress is being made, got lots of plumbing, lots of electrical, lots of exterior work, lots of interior work going on. The uniqueness, I think, as all of us know, is that when we start, it began opening up this beast, especially on this side, the old, you know, late 50s portion of it, is that, you know, we recognize some things that were not either detectable, or as a result that we didn't take a deeper look at the time into some specific areas, especially around asbestos at the time due to nothing more than cost, because it was not affordable at the time, and still is not affordable. We're discovering some things that have to be addressed. And so, if you take a look at the potential change order, the change order list, there are a number of things on there, some are approved, most are approved, and those maybe half or so are approved, some are pending and are reviewed, some of these are specific to just that. And I want to paint this picture just a little bit broader for you. We could have gone through and done a full asbestos and hazardous material survey of that building. That would have been a very expensive proposition at the time. We rather chose to do asbestos and hazardous material survey of the areas that we believe were going to be impacted by the construction. And so, that occurred six, eight, maybe nine months ago.
That's pretty typical as well.
It's pretty typical, and you find things. And, but even since then, the reality is, since then, we've had, in one case, a restroom where some of the ceiling began to come down. Didn't see the ceiling collapsing eight months ago, but that ceiling tile started to come loose, gets within the ceiling tile. The second comes loose, it becomes friable, it becomes airborne, we have to bring in the abatement crew, and we have to have it abated. And the second you start to do that, then you're taking a look at any areas adjacent to that specific location. So, while I think in an ideal world, like Lauren and I had a great conversation today about, wouldn't it have been nice if you can picture the main entrance to that, to that building that goes down, as you enter to the front, goes east and goes north, you know, in hindsight, had money not been an object, it would have been ideal to pull all the ceiling, all of the tiling, all of the siding, all the stucco, everything off of the walls, and fully redo all of the walls and ceiling in that place, simply because the, there's some asbestos in all of those. The asbestos content isn't necessarily very high, but it's beyond the threshold that's allowable for access. The other piece that we realized, and this is one, actually, I give credit to Lauren because he brings quite a history of asbestos and hazardous material tenderness to this project. One of the first things he noticed, and even though, you know, the architect and project, and our engineers and others took a look at it as well, there's some spackling on the ceiling in the main hallway that comes into the school. That can all be encapsulated. But through some advice by Lauren, he said, but look, he says, clearly, at times in the past, some kids have either jumped up there and touched their fingers on it, or taken a stick to the ceiling, and all of that texturing has a small amount of asbestos in. And again, the second becomes airborne, so it becomes a problem. So, we are now pricing as a potential change order, a suspended ceiling that will actually go the entire length of the hallway, and we think that's going to be a reasonable investment, rather than trying to do something to encapsulate all that because we don't necessarily believe that you can, that you can. We can encapsulate it, but it's not going to protect the seventh grader with a stick that's going across the top of the, or the bottom of the ceiling and cause some potential disruption down the road.
Seventh grader wouldn't do that.
Okay. So, I know.
There's really no reason to remove all the asbestos, because it's a great product. That's why it was used.
That's right.
It's, it really is.
As long as it encapsulated.
Yeah. As long as it doesn't become friable, it's a wonderful product.
And keep in mind, 50% of the demolition of that building is hazardous material abatement. There's just no easy way getting out of it. So, again, from my perspective, I'm sharing this with you, that while, you know, we didn't want this project to go over budget at all, it is, it's going slightly over budget based upon our calculations at this point, counting contingency, we're about $135,000 over budget. If you take a look at the front page, the summary sheet, with the exception of the deducts for removal of community roots, which totals about $248,000. If you take a look to the fourth figure down from the top, it says estimate changes for ADA, public works, fire, life, safety, abatement, it's still at $135,000, but what I'm here to tell you is that that number's going to go up. I mean, especially if we're taking a look at putting a suspended ceiling in that hallway, which could be a $20,000 price tag, and some additional things. Lauren and I were taking a look at some tile in the kitchen area today that wasn't recognized when we did the evaluation six or eight months ago as well, but there's some hollow places in the tile that we need to abate and also reattach the tile in the kitchen in order to make it compliant. So, not huge surprises. If you recall, we spoke about that the likelihood of this project could hit the 200, 250, even $300,000 or more. We're still standing below that, we're still keeping it in check, and what I can tell you is, we are working incredibly hard to scrutinize every single purchase on this place to do everything we can to keep within as close to budget as possible. I did share another document with you that I think is important to note, because as a couple of you have pointed out, you know, with the loss of community root school, you don't have that, that lease revenue as you move ahead. And, you know, two things come to mind for that. First of all is, this is a summary of construction excise tax revenue that you've realized as a school district for the last few years. If you take a look at 2015 and 16, we're nearly double the pace that we had estimated. We estimated about $73,000 a year in revenue from CET, and 2014, 15 is $143,000 nearly, and year-to-date for 15, 16-year, a little over 108. I believe that'll hit 150 or higher this year. So, again, nobody's very predictive with something like this. The economy can tank, of course, but as long as the building continues, you have some healthy revenue coming in. The other piece that I'll recommend again, and I haven't really heard, I don't know if it's support or interest in doing so, but you as a school district can consider increasing the year rate for construction excise tax up to an additional 18 cents per square foot of new construction, new residential construction in this community. You currently charge a dollar per square foot, that was the rate established in 2009 or 2008, whenever CET began, but there's a progressive amount that you can increase every year, and that hasn't been considered. So, when you can think in terms of that, and if you're looking for creative options for additional revenue to help support things like the Slater project and the anticipated increase in costs, or even in the other facility costs, you have potentially, if it's $150,000 a year, you've got, or excuse me, $150,000 CET revenue a year, you've got another $25,000 or $30,000 sitting on the table that could be used. You have to, I think, have a very good conversation about whether that's something you're interested in asking the community, or not the community, but your new construction folks or not.
Andy, come back with this document. The ADA and fire life safety, is that all being driven by the city and by the fire department?
Yes.
And have you tried negotiating that?
Yes, and we have negotiated some of that. They've been, the city especially has been very cooperative in working with us, to a certain degree as well, but when you have the fire district and the fire marshal coming out looking at the site, the wiggle room is less, and so, but they've both been cooperative in helping us out.
Okay, but there's defensive calories spent to try to knock that back.
Yes, absolutely.
This 2.3 million figure, is that including the deduction of the $248,000 for the community roots being out of there?
It does.
Okay, so that, it would be basically the budget if we would have gone as planned with community roots, would have been $248,000 higher than what you're showing.
Correct.
Okay.
Which, if I do the math right, you're at about, like, $135,000 over, so right now what the budget was originally. Another piece, and again, you take this for what it's worth, this is about 9% over budget right now, those viewing, construction, and excavation-related work, you know, that happens on projects every once in a while, and, but I've had some interesting conversations with neighboring superintendents recently about the cost of construction, and that estimates that literally occurred six months ago, seven months ago, Mount Angel experiences, Salem Kaiser experiences, North Saniam, and Woodburn's experiencing as well, the cost for actual construction cost is just through the roof. 100% in some cases, 130% in one school district from estimates six months ago to actual bids coming in today, simply because, well, what we're hearing in a way is that the subcontractors are staying incredibly busy, and when you're so busy, I mean, the economy drives it.
Especially in Silver Falls.
Yeah, it's a supply and demand thing. Unfortunately, during, when the economy slid, all these contractors went out of business and they didn't come back, and so now, they can name their own price because people want stuff done, and the economies get a lot more healthy, and they can charge whatever the heck they want.
There's also a lot of retirements happening, and just, a lot of these places are understaffed because they can't get the people.
So, it's, it's, from, again, my perspective only, but it's news that we somewhat anticipated, it's not as bad as I think it could have been, and we're doing it, and we're gonna keep it on this thing. And we're, we're still targeting, laying off this opening and be completed and ready to roll. And Lauren is experiencing a whole new way of being in our school district by having multiple projects on his plate.
Any more, any more new walls or areas that have to be opened up, and, I mean, have we discovered the unknowns, you think, or are there any more discoveries to happen?
I think there's still potential for more discoveries to happen in this. I mean, we're hoping we've got most of it figured out, but there's, there's always a potential.
Oh, yeah, there's always a.
We're really just getting going into the thick of the actual construction, the demos done, so I wouldn't want to say, no, we found it all, because.
You never find it all.
This is an old building, and, you know, there's a lot to it, it's been sitting for a long time.
But the demo's done, you got most of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, we have some door replacement that still has to occur, and so that demo's still, and there's abatement that needs to occur around those. And those are the ADA doors that we're required to put in, and even removing a door requires abatement because the texturing around the door has 2% or a little over 2%.
You probably have blood there, too.
Probably.
Questions for this? Questions for this?
Okay, we'll keep you posted.
Other items?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, one other item. Thank you, Jennings. Is, we have all of the committees coming together for the principal selection process, which will begin next week. I know, Wally, you said you could make it if you needed to with your serving on that community committee, but if some, another board member has an interest in serving on that community committee, it would be a week from tomorrow. Take a major portion of your day, but I'd love to have a board member sit on that committee if you could.
Okay. A week from today?
A week from tomorrow. Tuesday, the 31st.
Maybe email us about that later in the week. I think it's important, some, one of us be, a board member be there.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Aaron, did you want to?
Yeah, I, you know, I emailed, we talked about on email just about another topics for this meeting, and the one thing that I wanted to throw out there, given we've seen, heard some community input on music curriculum and specifically the one at Eugene Field, soon to be Mark Twain for next year. And half, we had half of that head that got moved and for music to the, to a media position, to have a full-time media position. I, some of the discussion we had at our last meeting, I know Tom, we kind of got into about how valuable music is to our, to the curriculum in our schools. And I think if we value that, we need to make sure that we're putting a priority on that and not getting rid of what we already have in terms of music. Now, some of the other outlying schools don't have music in the curriculum and that's just by nature of the design and that's, is what it is.
Well, it's a choice they made.
Yeah, of course, it's a choice that they made. But at the same time, I think, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about what is this extra media head? Because we went through so much during the budget committee process and approval, just to kind of understand, you know, what is the need again for the extra media head and why are we sacrificing music? And granted, I know it's the site, you know, directors or the site instructor principals' decision and the whole staff's decision there to do this, but I think we have to kind of examine that and say, "Why are we getting rid of this if we establish music as a valuable resource in our entity, in our instructional curriculum here in Silver Falls?" So, I just wanted to bring it up just to kick it around and maybe we can just, quick discussion, I don't want to belay her too long, but if we do put priority on music, you know, what is this extra half of a, you know, FTE head going to do in the media, for the media role? And, you know, is it, is it really that valuable enough to get rid of a music head or half of a music head?
It's a slippery slope.
I know.
Because it's a site-based decision making there.
Right.
And they made a decision, I think it's perfectly fine to ask why they made a decision and what's behind it. But if we start going back and saying, "Music's really important," then every school's going to be saying, "Well, I want additional dollars for music because we made a decision that something else is more important."
Right. Right. Can we just get more clarity? Maybe myself, and I don't mean it not being the known here as much as maybe I could, but...
It did seem to be pretty, I mean, I was gone for several days, came back and, you know, granted, a lot of it was the same letter just passed around by different people, but, you know, yeah, I got a lot of emails about that as well.
Yeah. It's just understanding what, why the increased FTE or half of an FTE for the media head and what kind of that role entails and understanding the decision behind that. It was just reasonable.
Yeah, the, I can't speak entirely for Jennifer and the staff of Eugene Field, but what I can tell you, just some history first of all, is that the, at one point in time, Eugene Field, before the most recent budget cuts, Eugene Field had a part-time music teacher like they do right now and had a full-time media specialist. And then, I think it was a 0.8 media specialist, if I'm not mistaken. And then, when the reductions occurred, the school at the time made the decision to fully eliminate the media specialist position.
And that was a few years ago?
That was a few years ago. And with the intent of maintaining media.
2000 what? It was two years ago?
Yeah, it may have been more than three, three or four years ago. But with the intent of doing just that, maintaining music, maintaining counseling, maintaining PE, I mean, a variety of other choices were made, as Wally suggests, to do that. What has occurred over the last few years, and again, this is, Danny, you can chime in if there's anything I'm missing here, is that the sheer increase in technology in the school has been off the charts. One-to-one devices are nearly school-wide and they're finding it a struggle to maintain the instruction in the classroom with the one-to-one devices and having the specialists necessary in order to do it, in order to bring back or to have that kind of instructional proficiency within the building. They made the decision to say, "That is of a higher value for us," with the understanding that it's not ideal, but that the classroom teachers were in agreement that music could be taught by the teachers in the classroom, again, in the K-2 setting, which you're talking about fundamentals, basic music, rhythm, et cetera. We're not talking about middle school band. So, I think that's an important distinction to make. And the teachers of Eugene Field, excuse me, Mark Twain, believe that they can capture that sufficiently within the classroom setting and still having the support that they really wanted and needed over the last few years related to media specialists. That's how I can best capture it.
And it's not just about the one-to-one devices. It's also about having this person be a literacy specialist. And so, that as teachers are trying to create interventions, extensions, remediations for kids, you have this literacy specialist who can come alongside the teacher, program iPads, teach them the different apps that would be applicable for that kind of growth. And then, at the same time, run a media, library media environment.
So, they're able to act as almost like, for somebody who may have like an IEP that needs extra help in a certain area, they're able to come in specifically deal with that and how they interface with the media to help the skills develop.
Right. And not just, you know, for IEP kids, but their general population, I mean, Jennifer, they have done a fabulous job of really doing early identification of kids who could potentially need an IEP. And by having pretty extensive, intensive remediations prior to getting to that stage, you're able to reduce the amount of referrals that we get for IEP consideration. And it was also based on, you know, their data, their STAR data, they're looking at what kids need in terms of the literacy piece. And we think that they made a tough decision, but as Jennifer described it, the process that they went through was very purposeful. And they had to make a choice, you know, so.
Well, the choice they made a few years ago, Lauren, what I thought, that to get rid of the media specialist, there was an equal or a greater outcry at that time when that happened.
Yeah. I think one discussion, you know, this is something that'll probably happen this year, but one discussion, I know Andy's already talked about this, is to look at, you know, maybe different ways to fund music in the district. And I don't, you know, who knows what's possible? I know you and Steve have already started talking about this a little bit, or you've said, or it's in kind of, in the pipeline anyway. But much the same we do with technology, you know.
Great answer.
We started, instead of take, instead of schools being in charge of all the funds for all the technology, we started making that more of a district. A few years ago, we started that. So, maybe, you know, maybe there's a possibility to do something like that with some of the arts programs to just, and to make it more, a little more consistent district-wide. So, who knows? I mean, something might have to be given up to do that. But that's one, that's another way to look, to try to fix this a little bit.
It could be, but music technology is quite different. The way to struggle in technology department, they were charged with everything across the district and charged to keep things running, but they had no control of what the schools were putting in place. So, centralizing that, fix that issue.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Are there any grants available for music, like the PE grant they've gotten? Probably not, huh? Otherwise, somebody would have found it.
No, I think the PE, well, I do know of one funding source, but the PE grant was in anticipation of required PE. That's another concern. A year from now, we're going to be talking about that.
That's the year we have a conversation next year.
If the legislature's not going to free up any more dollars, they did thankfully for full AK, but if they don't free up any dollars for kindergarten, kindergarten, excuse me, for PE, all bets are off because we have quite a mandate coming up just a little, about 14, 15 months from now.
So, a question was posed to me, and I have no idea the logistics of this, is it possible for either a volunteer to take that on if they were willing to or for a PTC to help fund that?
Sure. Yeah, we have PTC for after-school music programs, I think, in three schools right now. Absolutely. I love our volunteers, but to be able to say we have a reliable volunteer, three days a week for nine months of the year, that can be a stretch. But PTC dollars, we have a proven track record with the use of PTC dollars, so I'd love to see more of that.
Well, and I think it's important that as the public asks for information, is that we communicate with them that we haven't heard anything negative about music. It's site-based decision. That's right. So, it's not that anybody doesn't like it.
Yeah. Yeah.
True.
But, you know how it is, no matter what, somebody picks, somebody else, you know, like, you know, the kids, two are going to pick McDonald's, one's going to scream Burger King's better, so, you know, it's just, of course.
It's just, it's our situation. It's just, I think, I understand now even more, but I thank you for the explanation on that. And I know that, I knew, you know, along with a good reason for it, I just wanted to understand more, but I can say this, I don't necessarily like it, but I understand why we need to do it. And, but, you know, I think, again, I know we all value the music program, it's so valuable, especially at that age, but I understand. May not like it, but I understand.
It's all important. All the programs are important. Unfortunately, you have to make hard choices sometimes.
Yeah.
And we'll probably be seeing more of that in the next few years.
I think in our society too, as a whole, you know, the arts and everything aren't necessarily as valued as maybe in some other countries or even as they once were. We just, we have a very artistic community and we've heard that from the community members at board meetings, and I think we should always keep that front and center. So, appreciate that a lot.
Keep the discussion going. Okay, anything else? Okay, we have one action item, approved Global Pacific Environmental of Vancouver, Washington as vendor for hazardous material removal for Butte Creek Seismic Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $72,200. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion?
This chairman is fully funded by the state seismic grant. No general funds for this.
Okay. 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 Any other discussion? All with favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. We'll take a short break and then we'll adjourn to executive session under RRS 192660 to conduct deliberations of persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions and to consult legal counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. So, we'll be back in five minutes or so. Okay, we'll move out of executive session, back into regular session, and we'll go to the business for adjournment. Thank you.